We'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting today, Wednesday, April 14th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Austin?
Here.
Brooke?
Here.
Rose? Oh, I'm sorry, Rose is absent. And then Commissioner Scheffler? Commissioner Schiff?
Here.
Vasani?
Here.
And Chair Carter-Bone?
I am here.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move forward with the next item on the agenda. Do we take any public input before we go on to the PH1?
Actually, Chair, you do have the minutes on your agenda?
Okay, yes. So I would like to ask for approval of the minutes for the meeting that was in March 10th, which was our last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Austin?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Scheffler? I see a yes for Scheffler. Schiff?
Yes.
Vasani?
Yes.
And Chair Carter-Bone?
Yes. Okay, now we'll move on to...
If I may, just wanted to announce that Commissioner Rose is present at this time.
Okay. So we'll move on to the first item on the agenda. Is that correct?
Actually, Chair, this is a time if citizens want to speak on any items that are not on the agenda, we do not see anybody at this time. So we can move on to the public hearings.
Okay. So with no public input, the first item is PH1, Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2021-0005. And we're going to have a presentation on that? By Teresa, I think?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm just going to make sure that the interested public has been let into the meeting. Okay? And hopefully you can all see the PowerPoint. So good evening to you Commissioners. Thank you very much. Our first item, or our only item this evening, is a conditional use permit application for an existing gym, Foothill Gym, to operate during late night hours, which is defined in our Monrovia Municipal Code as "any business operations between the hours of midnight and 6:00 a.m." Foothill Gym is requesting to open at 5:00 a.m. But before we get into the details of the request, it's important to note that since its relocation to 204 West Foothill Boulevard, the gym has been operating under COVID-19 public health orders, which until recently have prohibited any indoor gym activities. Therefore, since January, gym patrons have been exercising outdoors in the parking lot. Unfortunately, the gym's operations, particularly these outdoor operations, have caused detrimental impacts to the residential neighborhood that's located directly to the south. Several neighbors have written or called the city with concerns regarding noise, litter, traffic, parking, and lighting disturbances. City staff has been working with the applicant and the residents to address these concerns as they have arisen. Furthermore, many of the concerns raised have been the basis for the recommended conditions of approval related to this conditional use permit. Initially, the applicant had proposed to begin his indoor operations at 5:00 a.m. However, once he learned of the number of concerns coming into the city from the community, he revised his request in two ways. One, he will not conduct any outdoor operations at 5:00 a.m. And two, he will not begin 5:00 a.m. operations until he's able to move the entire gym operation indoors. So the request before the commission this evening is therefore to consider the late night hours, beginning at 5:00 a.m., for indoor use only. Little bit of history. Foothill Gym has operated in Monrovia at various locations since 1987. Most recently, from the year 2000 to 2020, the gym was located at 202 South Myrtle Avenue. Over time, the gym has grown more successful, and a larger facility with more parking is needed to accommodate all of the gym patrons. As a result, Foothill Gym acquired their current location in late 2020, which is approximately 3,000 square feet larger, but has almost three times the amount of parking as the previous location. The new location of the gym is on the southwest corner of West Foothill Boulevard and South Primrose Avenue. Of note is the adjacent residential neighborhood to the south. The Linwood Court Townhomes contain 40 residential units, and you can see that they directly abut some commercial uses here in the city. It's important that businesses in this area be sensitive to the existing residential community. We can see from the zoning map that the property is located within the neighborhood commercial zone and directly abuts the residential medium-density zone. Per the municipal code, this use of an athletic club or health spa is permitted by right in the NC zone. However, while the gym use does not require an approval of an entitlement to move into a location in neighborhood commercial zone, the Monrovia Municipal Code does not have a specific parking requirement for health clubs or gyms. For this reason, in December of 2020, the applicant did go through a major determination for parking before our Development Review Committee, which was meant to ensure that there is enough onsite parking to accommodate the use. When the DRC conducted the parking determination in December, the existing 56 parking spaces was considered adequate for this use. The industry standard for full-service fitness facilities is 3.3 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. Considering the building's size of just over 14,000 square feet, 48 spaces would have been the industry standard requirement. This facility has 56 spaces. In the DRC's parking determination, conditions of approval were adopted. However, because the review was specifically related to parking, the conditions of approval only addressed parking and parking-related impacts. The approved conditions called for parking improvements, including restriping the parking lot, repairing the parking lot, and providing additional landscaping. The DRC was also particularly concerned with the potential for impacts to the residents nearby, and a condition was added that would prohibit gym patrons from parking in the residential neighborhood to the south. It's important to note, however, that the DRC's review was focused on future indoor operations and the conditions focused on the long-term use of the site. However, the applicant desired to continue his operations while still complying with the Los Angeles County Public Health Orders related to the COVID-19 pandemic, and he subsequently applied for a temporary outdoor business operations permit, or what we call a TBO permit. This permit was created in response to the pandemic to support our local business community and provide a way for all businesses within the city to continue operating during the pandemic. The TBO permit for Foothill Gym was approved in 2021. However, the temporary outdoor operations created impacts to the residents for three primary reasons. First, gym patrons exercising outdoors caused more noise and privacy impacts than a typical indoor gym would. Second, utilizing the gym parking lot as the exercise area prevented patrons from parking onsite and pushed more vehicles onto the streets and even into neighboring properties. And third, being one of the only gyms in the area to provide outdoor facilities, Foothill Gym experienced a temporary increase in the number of patrons using their equipment every day. Once operations began in January and throughout February, residents reported concerns to Monrovia's code enforcement. In March, planning staff sent a courtesy notice to the neighborhood regarding this conditional use permit application in order to give residents the opportunity to submit comments on the project. We did receive a large response from residents in the community, as well as gym members speaking in support of the project. In total, 26 people reached out to staff, and 22 of the 26 comments expressed concerns regarding the early operating time, and they detailed impacts that were being felt within the community. Impacts noted mainly related to parking, traffic, noise, litter, privacy impacts, lighting, view impacts, and a general feeling that the peace of the neighborhood had been disturbed. But I'd like to give the commission a little bit of context as to the conditions of the site before we get into the operations. Here are some photos of the parking lot of Foothill Gym before the outdoor operations. The residential units you can see are situated to the south. Here we have some photos of the current conditions on the site. We can see the temporary tents that have been set up in the parking lot under which the exercise equipment has been placed. The parking lot configuration that you see here is temporary and has been in place for approximately three months. The gym owner will move his operations indoors 100% by May 1st, 2021. We can see from the site plan that the conditional use permit application is for indoor gym use only. The parking lot area will be used solely for parking. The current striping allows for 56 vehicles. However, the planned parking lot improvements will increase that number to between 60 and 65 parking spaces. However, given the number of concerns that have been expressed to staff, we're recommending several conditions of approval related to this project, which would include that residents not park in the... I'm sorry, gym patrons not park in the residential community, that all activities be conducted indoors, that the windows and doors be kept closed, that the music level not be audible outside of the boundaries of the establishment, no storage outdoors, no patrons on the premises during closed hours, lighting to be directed away from adjacent uses, and trash to be disposed of onsite. The applicant has reviewed the recommended conditions of approval and has agreed that the gym will operate within these recommended parameters. He does, however, have one concern. He points out that condition number nine on Data Sheet 1, which requires the doors on the south elevation to be locked during late night hours, conflicts with his ADA path of travel. He's asking, therefore, that the commission consider removing or amending this condition this evening. The conditional use permit requires that the Planning Commission make several findings in order to approve the project. In this case, staff believes we can make the findings. However, special attention must be paid to that final finding, which specifies that the use not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Once the operations move entirely indoors, concerns over noise, parking, privacy, and litter should be reduced. With the recommended conditions of approval in place, staff believes that the impacts currently felt by the residents in the neighborhood can be mitigated. We did receive additional public comments prior to our meeting this evening. Three letters came in, which have been emailed out to the commissioners. The letters are reiterating concerns that have been felt by the residents: excessive noise, parking, speeding in the neighborhood, increased traffic, idling in cars, creating exhaust pollution, and trash. We also had reports of gym clientele being loud, littering and changing clothes in front of residential units. And one resident also included photographs of how she has made adjustments to her home to try and mitigate the impacts that she's been feeling. Staff in the DRC are recommending approval of the indoor late-night operations. Once the gym moves indoors, many of the greatest impacts will be mitigated. The recommended conditions of approval will provide additional mitigation measures. Additionally, while the gym operations, particularly the outdoor operations, have had several impacts to the community, the conditional use permit process gives the city to apply operating conditions that have been specifically written with the location and context of the neighborhood considered. Enforcement mechanisms have also been recommended within the conditions, including a six-month review of the operations. Therefore, staff in the DRC are recommending approval of the CUP. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
I have a couple of questions. Is that Chair, Madam Chair, can I?
Yes, I was going to say, do any of the fellow commissioners have any questions?
I do.
I do.
Can I go first?
Go first.
Thanks. Sorry for my tardiness. I was trying to find the link to get on, and it went into my junk mail. Oh, my goodness. Anyway, what are the current operating hours?
They're currently operating from 6:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. So the late night, it would allow one hour earlier than what they're currently...
And one hour later. I want to go back to the... I want to go back to condition number nine?
Yes.
Where they want to have this amended, the ADA. This is, I'm looking at it, if you could put that picture back up. This is in the back of the unit, so this is on the south side. This would be on the side with the houses.
That's correct.
Okay. So I see that this is the ADA because it has the ramp to get up to the door.
As well as the stripe.
Patrons can't get in, ADA, patrons can't get in the front door?
Well, they can enter through the front door, but the parking lot being situated in the rear of the building has the ADA striping, as well as path of travel, to this ramp in the back. If they were to park in the parking lot, they would have to go out to the public right-of-way on Primrose, up a steeper slope, and around the corner to enter through the front.
Okay. I guess I'm feeling for the... I'm looking at this on the part of the homeowners on the south side. And I'm all for ADA. I mean, I understand that. Is this... So... I guess my concern is that I would love for this to be available for ADA use only and not having people just use it as a general going in and out, because it is going to be noisy, especially if we allow 5:00 a.m. But I don't know how you mitigate that.
In speaking with the applicant, some of what we were considering with this condition is those doors are currently soft-close doors. We also discussed keeping the music level lower or off during the early morning hours of operation. So those are some other considerations to make when we're looking at this condition to amend it in a way that would have less impacts on the neighborhood.
Yeah, because I would hate to see that just start being used as entrance, because that's defeating the whole purpose of what we're trying to do for the homeowners. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill, if I could couple on to that, or if you'd like to go first, because I had a question. I have a question, and I'm glad Commissioner Rose brought up the ADA. Can staff and/or I saw that Carol's on there explain the criteria or educate us on the ADA access and how that works so we better understand the limitations and the needs that we have to provide for people that need to use that entrance or the ADA access related to this building?
I can go ahead and go with that. Generally, ADA requirements or accessibility requirements, whether they're ADA or the Cal Chapter 11 A or B, require that accessible parking be the closest... have the closest path of travel available. So that's kind of the criteria that we look. So if there is an availability for close access, that's where your ADA space should be, and your path of travel, again, should be the shortest path of travel to get to the business. So that's generally what the ADA requires. Additionally, I think it's just important to note that the condition is only for the hours of 5 to 6, because that's the only thing that this conditional use permit covers. So at 6 o'clock, the doors would be opening for general public.
So I'll couple on that. There definitely, you have doors on both sides, and they're for emergency exiting and entering is one thing, exiting is another. If you would have a mechanism to allow the persons needing to use the ADA or the accessibility in the ramp, is it possible to direct or have a condition in the CUP making everybody else go around? I share the same concern. Gyms themselves are not quiet places, and opening the doors and closing the doors does bring that, the indoor music and noise, clanging of the weights, you know, the gym noise. Is there a way to... Is it permissible under the CUP to add that condition in?
In speaking to the gym owner, and I'm sure when he makes his statement to the commission, he will talk a little bit more about this, but his concern is that if those doors are locked, that would actually create more noise impacts, because people will be knocking on the doors, shaking the doors, which could create disturbance to the neighbors. Because the parking is located in the back, he believes that most people are just going to automatically go towards those doors.
They will.
Yeah, I understa... Yep, people usually go in and out the same door. Back in my other life, that was an issue, exiting and that. Okay. Well, we can bring that up. Next question for staff. The Vons loading dock, or question would be, is it neighborhood... Is it the same zoning for the Vons, you know, in the shopping center to the east of the applicant's building site?
Yes, that's also neighborhood commercial.
And they have a condition, or at least they have signage saying, "No drop-offs or using the loading dock prior to 7:00 a.m." I don't know if that's a condition or them just being nice neighbors. Would that... That noise production have any relation to the applicant's business?
Well, there are cumulative impacts when you're dealing with residential community. communities abutting commercial activities. Um, and so while those are two very different uses that are not related or affiliated in any way, um, there is a compounding effect.
You know what, I'll, I'll, I'll give the floor to Bill. If I have more questions, I'll come back. Thank you, Steph.
I'm looking at the overhang where the ADA access is, and I'm wondering if sound and light bending curtains could be hung from those edges to mitigate sound and light? Has anybody looked at that?
We have not discussed that specifically with the applicant. Um, we can certainly ask him. He seems amenable to many of the suggestions that staff has had.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question too. Keshi, may I have the floor? This, this is Bhushani. Commissioner Bhushani.
Yes, please go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I think.
You have the floor.
Okay, so I think from the ADA perspective, it's just a matter of access. I do believe that we should have access there. And as a commissioner, as a commercial realtor, I deal with this a lot, which is the access points. And the way to add to that point is if the door was to be locked, you would have a buzzer on there that would ring inside, and the door would have to be opened for that specific user. That's what we've done in a lot of our buildings and, and where I've worked in the past. So it sounds like if we, if we believe that, that it should be locked, then we can have that buzzer on the door, and that solves that problem. But I guess the real question is, from five to six and six to seven, um, is, is six is pretty early, five is pretty early, the both of them are pretty early as it is. Um, if we have a, if we have a kind of a trial period for the CUP in the first six months where we can have them correct issues, we'll see, we can see how the process is going. And if noise is actually coming from that door at the five to six period time. And if it is, we can make an exception that we can, we can allow it to be open from five on with the back door open, and then if the noise is becoming an issue, then we can always go back and adjust the CUP such that we do lock that door, or we do find ways to dampen the noise back there. And what I understand is the interior, is the interior of that building, um, it's, it's like a corridor inside. So the actual rooms with the noise around are actually closed up with doors inside. So the actual noise is just the people walking in and out through the corridor, as I remember from that building. So it's, it seems like, that, it seems like that the actual weight noise or the, the, uh, music noise will not come out because it's in, it's in a closed room.
That's, that's correct. I pulled up the site plan again, which includes a floor plan of, of the gym. Uh, you can see that the entry from the parking lot, you will be entering a hallway um, with the weight rooms situated towards the east side of the gym, resistance machines situated towards the west side. There's no music that is played in that hallway entry area. It would just be in those rooms that are off to the east and west.
Okay, so it seems to me that if the back door was open, I think the biggest issue is we just don't want people gathering or talking near the doors. That's the biggest issue. And I don't, I don't see how the, this, how, how the big effect on the noise. I think it actually be the opposite because you mentioned earlier that people would go to that door and start banging on the door, which then causes the noise. So I, 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 I think it's, is, is it true that we can make corrections during that trial period of the CUP? If things are not, um, being followed or the noise is continuing to happen?
Yes, and I, I can pull up the condition here, um, for the exact language. And, uh, I believe what it says is that the review would be conducted for the noise, litter, um, trash, or any other impacts. So a- at that time, um, the review can focus on anything we've heard so far, or if any new concerns are raised.
Okay, thank you. So that kind of answered my question. I think it's probably not, it's probably less of a concern than I would have thought before our conversation here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Keshi.
Are there any other questions from the fellow commissioners?
Sure, I did have, I did have one or two more. Apologize.
Okay.
This is back to city staff. Um, limiting early morning music, do we have the ability to put that in, in a condition? And a couple that later in the evening as well. Do we have any ability to monitor or, uh, put a limitation? I know that some people bring their headphones and some people like a blast in a gym. That's the first question.
Yes, the commission does have the ability to add or modify conditions related to the music.
I think that was my question. Thank you.
Teresa, if, um, if I'm understanding this right, we're just looking at this as the complete indoor activity? Not, we're not looking at anything on what they're doing outside right now?
No, this, this approval this evening is for indoor only use. And in fact, there's a condition that would specifically prohibit any outdoor use that's attached to this request for early hours.
Okay, great, yeah.
One more to Teresa, the, um, review period, is it 180 days or sooner?
In this case, it's a six-month review. Um, again, if the commission feels that a different review period is appropriate, um, that can be amended.
Gary, I think Gary, Gary, are you talking? I think you're muted.
There you go.
What is the condition of condition nine right now as we speak? There's been a lot of input, there's been a lot of ideas. Is it staying the same as, as it is in, in our conditions?
Well, I, I think at this point, the public hearing hasn't opened, so at, once the public hearing is closed and all the public testimony is in, that would be an appropriate time for the commissioners to talk about amending any conditions.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more questions from the commissioners before we open the, um, public hearing? Trying to make sure I see everyone's face. Okay, looks like there's no more, no more questions. So now we will open the public hearing, and we would like to see if the applicant would like to speak?
Hi, yes. I don't know if you can hear me?
We can.
Hi, this is Brian, Brian Hulan. I'm the owner of Foothill Gym. And we've been in business in Monrovia since 1987, recently moving to a new location. I've heard a, a lot said about the quality of life and the disturbance to the neighbors. I'd like to say though, that it wasn't slight, it was extreme. And imagine you're living in, in your home, which is your sanctuary, your place of rest and peace, and all of a sudden this monstrous gym with hundreds of people you don't know are clanging weights, making noise, dropping litter, um, can't park anywhere. The car alarms are going off, they're beeping the cars in the morning. It was apps and is absolute nightmare. I'm a resident, a homeowner. I couldn't imagine it outside my home. It took a turn that we didn't expect with parking, when we had some parking regulations made that were then changed on us. Um, and as we were made of, aware of each situation, we did our best to modify it. We reduced the size of our activities by 40% to increase parking. But it's a state of emergency, and we had to do what we had to do to survive. Um, we've really tried to work hard with all of the, um, residential, uh, uh, residences, and as the city has notified us, we've made a tremendous amount of accommodations. We did know, and the one saving grace was this was temporary. And I anticipated that sometime between April and the summer, we were going to be allowed to move in, uh, to some degree, and hopefully enough to, um, uh, c- continue indoors and no longer be outdoors. And literally have all of these problems fade away. We have ample parking, so that's going to remove all the parking issues on the street. Um, it will also remove any litter because it's in our parking lot. I've gone to up and down personally, my staff goes up and down the streets, we pick up litter, we check for things. We found everything from ice cream to Wendy's to homeless to you name it, uh, and including face masks. And we know that when they're on the side of the street where a car would be, that's going to be ours, more than likely. So, you know, the home, the residents, the homeowners, they've been through a lot. And we hope that this is about to change dramatically for them in the next two weeks, and peace comes back. Their view will be restored, no more parking in the street, and tremendous amount quieter. We also experienced something that we hadn't anticipated, and that was a huge surge in our business. We were the only gym open four miles around. We had people coming from Rancho Cucamonga, Irvine, Burbank, Glendale, all over Southern California. They've already disappeared as soon as the gym opened and things are getting back to normal. Our 5:00 AM crowd is 100% 91016, so 100% Monroviaans. There are first responders, there are teachers, there are seniors, they come, it's a little quieter, there's only 20 to 30 people during that hour. And most of them like to do it before they can go to work. It's the only time they can work out. That's why we open at 5:00 AM. It's not because for any other financial reasons, because that's when our customers need us to be open. The concerns with the back door are a little less than people would think, and I'd like to explain why. First of all, the back door is set in. And directly facing the back door is the 10-foot wall. To the west is where it lowers down eight, but we have our side wall blocking that. You cannot actually see from our door into any residence's home. In addition, there's no music in the hallway at all. And we are actually basically three buildings in one, the way it's constructed. And all the interior walls are like the exterior walls are cinder block. So if you are in any of the rooms, and we have experimented with this both with planning and city council, we've had our music at full blast, to the point that we couldn't even talk in it, walked out on the front steps and can't hear it. So we guarantee you there's no music in the hallway. That's our reception, that's where people walk in. We can't have it, any music, we don't want to hear it because we have to be on the phones, talking to customers, that's where we do business. You then go to the right or to the left and enter in, in through other rooms into the main halls, which are fully surrounded by cinder block. And they have no openings at all to the exterior. The only openings are, our west building has three windows to the north. So on that, it's extremely quiet, there, there should hopefully be no issues whatsoever. Um, and I would have loved if you could all come down and just stand there and listen, you're quite amazed how quiet that is. Um, so hopefully things, all the other conditions, I, I, I look at, so they're absolutely, there should be conditions. It's not just that, okay, we all find agreement here, but what happens if 10 years down the road, Mega Gym comes along and buys us out? What happens to the residents then? They have to have fail safes and issues in place that will protect them, uh, from the future. Do you have any questions of me?
Okay, um, we're gonna, um, hold all questions, I believe, and then we will ask if there's anyone in favor that would like to speak? Anyone in favor? Okay.
Yes, we do have one speaker in favor.
Okay. Are they on? Want to state your name, please?
If I could go next, my name is Sari Callis.
Yes.
And I work for the Monrovia Chamber of Commerce. And I sent in my, um, comments on, um, March 15th. And I just would like to read them out loud, out and then just make some changes to them, just update it. But I would like to share the support of the conditional use permit for, um, Foothill Gym. Brian is a proactive business owner and prepares for the future. As of April 5th, um, we have moved into the orange tier, which allows, um, for indoor use at 25%. This approval should not be delayed. Gyms and customers have been patiently waiting to enter indoor facilities. Many of the gym users entering at 5:00 AM are essential workers and would like to work out before heading to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Sari. Or any other, anybody else like to speak in favor?
No other speakers in favor.
However, okay. So, uh, we have some people that would like to speak that are against it. Now's the time for you to, I guess, come on and state your name.
If anyone would like to speak with concerns about this project, you can use the raise hand feature on your Zoom to let us know. I believe we have, uh, Mr. Paul Bachhorst, who would like to speak.
Yeah, I, I don't see that, uh, control to turn on my audio, but I guess I'm, I'm on.
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
The audio is okay? Good. Uh, my name is Paul Bachhorst. I am president of the Homeowners Association at Lynnwood Court Town Homes. Uh, we are immediately adjacent, immediately downwind to the gym, and have suffered, uh, tremendous impact since the gym went in. And I have to say, speaking for my association, that we continue to oppose the early hours. We would like to see the current hours retained, that is the 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, to reduce to some degree, the impact on our community. Uh, we have a number of elderly people and, and others who have health problems, who are having difficulty sleeping. Uh, the, the noises that come from the gym are quite pronounced. Uh, just, I noticed that, uh, Craig Jimenez said earlier, gyms are not quiet places. Amen. Unfortunately, pollution coming from the gym lands in our residents that have health problems, and we need to get the rest coming from the gym. Then our opposition to the, to the hours. Now, there is a possibility of a change of heart on our part if in fact there were ways to eliminate the noise coming from the gym. Um, in the conditional use permit, there is reference to, um, let's see, the, the sound, I think in this case it's referring specifically to music. Not currently go beyond, extend beyond the boundary of the premises. I'm not sure what is meant by boundary of premises, if that's the physical structure of the gym, or if it includes the parking lot and the entire lot. But if in fact, sound were to be contained within the walls of the establishment, the cinder block walls that have been identified, we would then be spared the noise pollution that we're having to live with at the moment. Uh, at that point, we would, um, certainly reconsider our opposition. We would like to be good neighbors. We have worked with the City of Monrovia on a number of issues over the years, amicably, uh, collectively, for the good of the community. We would like that to be true this time around as well. Uh, but when I see our residents experiencing harm, crying because of the impact on their lives, some people considering moving, you know, I, I, I say, this is, this is not good. This is, this is beyond the bounds of what would be an acceptable neighborly arrangement. So I think, you know, the key issue from our point of view is, is noise abatement. Uh, there needs to be significant attention to noise abatement. That includes noise coming from the parking lot, doors slamming, people standing and talking outside, gathering up there, changing clothing outside. Uh, the, the impacts have been well noted by Teresa. I think the city is aware of them, they're documented. We've presented testimonials from many of our residents, giving the, their, the impact on them, you know, to personalize just what that impact is, not a, we're not just a bunch of cranks, you know, wanting to make a silly objection. We're, we're owners, we're members of the community. I've lived here for many, many years, as have other of our residents. We just, we want to see this handled in a responsible way that protects the rights of all. Uh, it, it, it may be, well, I noticed that in the conditional use permit, there is reference to, um, what is the term? Outside, the, the noise from the gym should not be heard outside the boundary or premises. I'm not sure whether, again, whether that, whether that is the physical structure or the entire lot. Uh, but that language, you know, could in fact protect our interests if it were enforced and if it were inclusive. Um, you know, all the noise coming. You know, all the noise coming, music, uh, the weights dropping on the floor, people talking. But the whole range of noise pollution is coming from the gym. If if that could be addressed, then we would, you know, want to reexamine our position. We don't oppose a gym being there under any circumstances, but as it turns out, unfortunately, the gym is just making a huge negative impact, harmful impact on our community, to the extent that some residents are considering moving. So again, as president of the Homeowners Association, I need to say that we oppose the five AM start time, five to eleven. We are not thrilled with six to ten, but it's, it provides a little less impact. Um, there are other aspects of the community use permit that will hopefully give us additional relief. You know, the time factor, the start and the stop time. So um, we want to be good neighbors. We've been good neighbors in the past. We want to work with the city and with other interests, business interests. Uh, but I I just, I just need to make a strong statement on behalf of many of our residents who are experiencing injury. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. I do appreciate it. I value it. I I really like the kind of grassroots democracy we have in Monrovia. Um, so again, thank you for the opportunity to present my remarks.
Okay. Would anyone else like to speak that has concerns? I guess you do the wave and those.
Chair, at this time, we do not see any other uh residents or people who would like to speak with concerns.
Okay, okay, thank you. So with that being said, I think this is the time that we um, we close the public hearing, is that correct?
Chair, you can, uh, the applicant has the opportunity, should have the opportunity to respond to the, any comments were made.
Okay, okay.
Hello, hi, can you hear me?
Hi there. Yes, we can hear you.
First of all, Mr. Brockers, thank you so much for 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 speaking. You are very eloquent, very and very true to your words and much respect for that. I know you've been through a lot and I'd like to personally apologize for that and everything you and the homeowners have gone through. Um, we are looking at one hour, five to six. Please rest assured, our members of that hours do not like loud music either. And um, you will not hear music and I look forward to, if this is approved, that upon review in whatever uh timeframe the commission puts forward, that that is found to be the case. And definitely, we we want to be good neighbors too, and really thank you for that. That's it. Pass it back to the commission.
Madam Chair, may I ask the applicant a question?
Of course.
Mr. Mr. Whelan, thank you. Um, can you explain, uh, the, I'll call it the traffic flow or your patrons or your guests there like through the day? So we can educate my fellow commissioners on the flow of of the clientele, you know, as you said earlier, it's basically uh local people. But um, kind of give us a a feel of the normal day.
Yeah, um, usually, and this is pre-COVID, because during COVID, things got very different. We had a massive increase of people from out of town. Um, we have already seen over four hundred and twenty people cancel as they have returned to their home gyms, which are now open. And that was to be expected. Um, in a typical day at five AM, um, people start to trickle in. They don't line up at five AM, they start to trickle in. Some come in at five, some come in five ten, five fifteen, and so forth. So usually, um, our historic records have shown between twenty and thirty people will enter the facility between five and six AM. Some maybe at five fifty five AM, maybe five thirty or maybe five. Um, they're typically more, they're all residents of Monrovia and they're our, our, what we call our locals, we see them every day, we say hi, they're really, really nice people. Uh, it gets quieter throughout the day and then, of course, busier at night, as with everybody after uh work is off, everybody comes and works out. That's a a a pretty normal day. Um, you don't get people hanging around the gym parking lot. They come and they go. We have more control over people when they're in our parking lot. We weren't aware at first that people were pulling up outside residences with their music blaring and sitting there for five minutes, getting ready, changing, because they didn't have locker rooms. Our locker rooms were were, our facility was closed. Um, as we've had twenty five spaces, parking spaces open recently, we've identified a few that have done that and asked them not to be sitting in their car, and that is easier to do in the morning. It's just to look outside and tell people, please don't sit in your car, don't rev your engine, you know, come in and uh spend as little time in the parking lot as possible. Uh, people don't hang around in groups. It's not a social gathering. It's not like you're having an an event uh where they talk about it afterwards. They're pretty much are heading off to work. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, tha- thank you very much. That was very informative to get that out. One one last question for you.
Yes.
Regarding that your concern of um of the ADA and using the rear door, could you um enlighten us on that and?
There there's a couple of things. From a practical point of view, people are going to park in the parking lot at the rear, get out of the car. The distance for them to walk to the door is a few feet. The distance to walk around the building means they walk through the whole parking lot and all the way around. They're spending more time outdoors and potentially causing noise or littering or other concerns that have been addressed. So the less time they're outside, the better. They get in, they get out, they get quicker. In addition, we have three, excuse me, four handicap spaces that are at the back of the building. There are no handicap spaces on the front, it's full of boulevard. We have a lot of members who have, varying from wheelchair to walkers, but we also have a lot of seniors who simply, it's harder to walk through. We have people with mental disabilities and people who you don't know what their disabilities are nor nor are we, would we even ask or allow to ask. And they just are going, people are going to take the shortest path in always. So they don't stand at the door talking, they come inside. If they're going to talk, they're going to talk inside. They're not going to be standing outside. They walk in, they walk out. Um, the way the the setup is done in the back is that our doors are inset. So they're further away than, our own building is blocking most of the residences. And I really think in the long term, it's less noise, less potential for noise if they can enter the back and in and out as quick as possible. Quicker they get in, they get uh get to the workout and done. When you open the door, there's no clang of weights. There are no weights or exercise equipment in our hallways. There's no music in the hallways. You can't hear anything from the sides. And we do that because that's our reception. We don't want to have noise when we're on the telephone or or meeting customers for the first time, checking people in.
Thank you.
Madam, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Brooke. I've got a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Um, good evening, Brian. Thank you for being here today. I've got a question for you as far as your tent life and having the machines and the weights outside. I think the biggest issue I'm hearing and reading from the residents who are a voicing concern is the noise level in the tents and that would include music. Was there music speakers being played outside in the tents?
There was, and we, and so we started cutting all that down, down, down to the point we stopped getting complaints about the music, but the noise of the weights was still going. So we identified quickly that the the bass, we took the bass out of music and then we turned it down to a volume that if you stand behind the speaker, you can't even hear it. So we addressed all those issues that we could control, the noise of the weights. When a machine hits metal, metal hits metal, it makes a clang. And I'll be honest, I'm out there sometimes and my teeth go like, oof, because I can feel a resident hearing it. Um, once we move inside, which we are about two weeks away from, there'll be nothing in the parking lot, no exercise equipment of any sort, no music of any sort. There'll be no music played in any capacity outdoors, only within the two cinder block rooms. So it'd be, we're hoping this wouldn't be like crickets out there.
I used to be a member of your gym.
I remember.
On Myrtle and I'd be there at five o'clock for a spinning class and I was like the only person there.
Yeah.
So I understand.
Bear in mind, I'd like to add something too. There will be no classes from five to six AM.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so at this point, the public hearing is closed. And we're gonna continue, and I think this is the time where we, um, if the commissioners have any other questions, ask if the commissioners have any other questions. Um, well, I don't have a question, but I have a proposal. Um, I was listening to Mr. Brockhorst and I, I wonder if it would be possible to put in in the CUP that the music, I I understand his concern for the the language of the um fatality of the area, and if we could have that be the 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 building itself so that there's, so that they have a level of comfort that there's not going to be music that will ever be played out in the parking lot. I'm, I think that's a small request and if that, if that gives them a level of com- comfort, that um we could add that.
Could I speak for that?
Yes.
Um, absolutely agree, hundred percent.
Thank you.
There will be no music played and there should be condition. And I would do this not just because of now, but in years down the road, things change, et cetera. I would want that as a resident. There should be no music allowed to be played in the parking lot whatsoever.
Thank you. I I think that they would, they will appreciate that.
This Commissioner Sheaf, I have a question. Would it be possible to post signs in the parking lot asking your patrons to try and maintain a level of quiet when they enter the back door of the gym?
Commissioner, actually, uh, I'm sorry to interrupt. If we want to ask the applicants more questions, we should open the public hearing up again.
Okay, so we will reopen the public hearing for additional questions. Thank you, John.
Can you hear me? Make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
We we have, we have a couple of things that we're going to be doing. Um, we will be putting signs up in the parking lot requesting members not to sit idle in their car or play music in their car. That's one of the major concerns. We will also have at our entrance, we will have a signage requesting members to pay attention, that this is a rental neighborhood, residential neighborhood, and uh not to gather or uh be noisy. We'll have the exact wording, which will work out properly, absolutely. And on our social media as well.
Thank you.
That's good. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions while the public hearing is still open? Okay. So if, no further questions, now we will close the public hearing again. Okay, and now I will ask.
Madam Chair.
I will ask. I'm sorry, I can't. Go ahead.
I I had to to offer a condition or or amend a condition to um review at ninety days instead of a hundred and eighty. So if there is an issue, we 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 catch it earlier as well. Um, I thought um RS News Commissioner had a great idea about the buzzer. Um, I guess we could look at that later and Commissioner Sheaf with the soundproofing is a good thing, but um we could come back and revisit it at ninety days so we could mitigate any issues.
Okay. So now, John, Craig, I'm gonna ask, uh, do we move forward now with the motion or how does that work?
Well, I think we've got a couple of things, uh, based on the comments of the commission, comments of the public, comments of the applicant, um, some recommended changes to the language, um, and we may have, uh, the staff may have some different ones. We're in, since we're in different locations, um, it's it's a little difficult to to coordinate that, but a couple that I would offer, um, is in condition of number ten, um, which says only pre-recorded amplified music is permitted um on the premises and such musicians shall be played only within the structure. And then I would change that to period and then continue that. There shall be no noise from the interior of the structure audible from the outside of the structure. And that would cover all noise. That would be noise of the music, that would be noise of the weights, that would be noise of people talking. So I think that that really broadens that and I think uh addresses the concerns um uh of the residents. Also, um, as was offered by um the applicant, um, to put place be, you know, good neighbor signs, um, I think we should make that a condition, um, and they should be on the exterior and on the interior and that those, um, the verbiage of those signs be uh presented to the planning division manager for their review. Um, and then additionally, I would recommend that on condition number seventeen, based on uh Commissioner Austin's uh comment, uh, that it be changed from ninety, sixty days, sorry, from six months to ninety days. I would also add that the uh residents of the Lynnwood Town Home uh be uh noticed of this um review.
I think all those are good.
And I think that's what I had, and I I don't know if any of the other staff or our citizen city attorney has any of the recommendations.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
I have, I have one other one, which is, um, the applicant stated that there would be no classes from five to six AM. I think that's a good condition to add as well. If that's acceptable to the commission.
And the one that I would add is the condition number nine, um, which was the one that was originally under co- uh discussion this evening. Um, if that should be struck, uh, because we, that door would be open for ADA access in the early morning hours.
Yeah, I think it'll create a problem if it's not str- not stricken.
Madam Chair, I have a comment too.
Okay.
You know, hearing that with all these restrictions we're gonna put on there, which is good, I don't think we need to even have a any restrictions on that back door, whether it's ADA or not, just leave it unlocked for that hour. Because if all these things that we're putting in place work, then we won't have any issues in ninety days. We can revisit it without even having the restriction of of that door being locked, because then we don't have to worry about the buzzer for, a buzzer for the ADA or someone trying to open the door for ADA. I'd rather just leave the, leave the door unlocked during business hours at all times, both from a safety perspective, but also the fact that we controlled the noise inside. So I would like to make that amendment if we can, to leave the door unlocked the whole time. Assuming all this other stuff controls the noise. And we have an ID test period, so.
And just to echo on to Commissioner Vishani's uh comment, that is, i- if it's up to the, uh, you know, if it's the pleasure of the commission to remove that condition at the, at the six month or at the ninety day review, if it is a problem, it can always be added or perhaps other sort of mitigation to address that can be um re-imposed at that time. So again, just by removing it at this point, um, doesn't mean that it's gone forever.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think now is the time we ask for a motion with the said changes. Is that how it would work?
Like to move, move to approve CUP twenty twenty one dash zero zero five with conditions as presented in the staff report, with the exception of nine, like to add, excuse me, I'd like to add a ninety day D uh DRC review. Like to add no music. Signage that would be approved by um planning division manager. Condition number ten. Also speaks about music. Did I leave anything out?
Yeah, leave the door.
The the classes prior to six.
No classes prior, prior to six o'clock. The honor stated he would not have class at between five and six.
And leaving the back. The notice to, uh, the ninety day notice would also include a notice to the Lynnwood uh court uh owners.
Yes.
I think the only thing missing was that leaving the back door access.
And leaving the back door access. And that's condition number nine. And that's condition number nine.
I'll, I'll make a second to that.
Okay.
I would suggest that nine just, nine just be deleted, because otherwise the, um, the, both the front and back door will just be open during the regular business hours. So nine can just be deleted out completely.
Is that fine? That would be number nine.
And this is Commissioner Brooke. I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, we, we have a second from Commissioner Vishani already.
I think
Okay.
The only question was, is not, is condition number nine going to be eliminated?
So, and Commissioner uh uh Scheffler, are you, are you, in, as part of your motion, are you saying delete condition number nine?
Yes, I am.
And then Commissioner Vishani, who's got the, the first second, um, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll accept it. I'll accept it.
All right.
Okay. Got it. And can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioners, Austin?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Sheaf?
Yes.
Vishani?
Yes.
And Chair Carter Bowen?
Yes.
And uh Chair, if I may read the uh appeal language. Decisions of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council if filed in writing within ten days, and note that an appeal fee is required.
Okay. Thank you, Craig. Thank you, Teresa and John for assisting me with that. Um, thank you to all of the fellow commissioners. So we will move on to our next item. On the agenda is called for administrative reports. Um, so that we have none of those. So Community Development Director's Report.
Yeah, a couple of things for you. Um just, uh, at first I want to thank, um, you know, Teresa who did a terrific job, um on, on the, the foothill gym. We also had Brian, you know, Brian Wheeler, the owner, who's been very cooperative in the process. And we got great feedback from, um, the residents, um, the adjacent residents. And I, I think this is a really good example of how Monrovia does things. You know, we, we had all parties and um, you know, I know there's a lot of concerns, but I think, and I think the planning commission came up with some, um, a, a very reasonable decision tonight. So again, I thought this was a, just a terrific, um, how government should work. Um, tonight for you, uh, John's going to give you an overview of our oak tree pres- preservation regulations. This kind of came about because, um, I did this for the plant, the City Council, uh, a week ago. Um, and we thought, well, you know, let's, let's give the, the Planning Commission, uh, an overview of how we preserve oak trees. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it to John to let him, uh, tell you about what we do.
Thank you, Craig, and good evening, Commissioners and Chair. This is um little overview of the Oak Tree Preservation Ordinance in the city. And Monrovia's been protecting oak trees for several years. In fact, this ordinance was adopted thirty-four years ago this month. Uh, Monrovia is one of the early cities to adopt an ordinance that protects the trees. Our Tree Preservation Ordinance covers all species of mature oak trees. Um, and what we consider a mature oak tree is a tree that has a ten-foot diameter when measured two feet above the ground. So if an oak tree meets this threshold, that oak tree is protected. Uh, before we go into the regulations, it's, it is really important first to acknowledge, uh, the law's purpose statement. Uh, this statement clearly explains the city's, um, tree preservation goals and the reasons for enacting the law. This purpose statement helps staff also administer the ordinance and make interpretations in those cases where the situation calls for a decision, a decision that doesn't fit neatly, uh, into the regulations. The, uh, it's also important for us to understand the city's, um, needs for establishing this. And we're preserving Monrovia scenic beauty and heritage, uh, maintaining the property values and retaining as many oak trees as possible. All while balancing, uh, the reasonable economic enjoyment of, of private property. As I said, all oak trees in the city are protected under this ordinance unless that oak tree is in the backyard of a single-family home, regardless of the underlying zoning district. So mature oak trees are protected on commercial properties, industrial properties, multifamily properties. And they're also protected on single-family properties if the trees are in the front or side yards. However, the mature oak trees in the backyard of a single-family house, um, is not covered by this ordinance. And the ordinance does, uh, set up a preservation permit uh process for three actions that affect an oak tree. One, uh, the complete removal of an, of a tree. Uh, for an application like this, the property owner would need to have a compelling reason, uh, for removing the tree, such as a certified arborist determination that the tree is sick or in danger of falling, or an owner has, um, an economic need to remove it because of imminent structural damage to the, to their house or building. Um, the second action, uh, is pruning or more than one-third the size of the tree's canopy or root system. Um, if needed for good forestry practice or needed to help the tree grow. And the third action, uh, requiring a permit is if, um, an irrigation system is being installed or, or grading is proposed within the drip line of a proposed tree, and the drip line is basically the, um, the shape of the crown. The permit application also calls for a site plan showing the location of the tree, a report from a certified arborist, and a fifty-dollar fee. These are, um, these applications are reviewed by our Development Review Committee, uh, which meets twice a month. Uh, the decisions of the DRC, um, are, uh, they can be appealed up to the Planning Commission. The ordinance does have an exemption to this process that allows city emergency pro- personnel to remove an oak tree if it poses a threat or hazard, or, um, threatens life or property. And also, public utilities are exempt from the, from the process. And, uh, preservation of an oak tree may be considered a spec- a special circumstance, uh, when the design of a project uh, needs a deviation from the development standards of the zoning code. The presence of an oak tree, uh, may be considered a special feature that can't be avoided, just as you would consider topography or the lot size or or the shape in a case of a variance. We also refer to the Oak Tree Preservation Ordinance, uh, for development review, uh, by imposing specific conditions that protect the tree, especially during um, construction activity. There'll be conditions of approval that we'd place on, um, the, uh the use permit to make sure that the trees are protected, such as having a barrier around the, uh, root system, protect, protect the tree from um, equipment running over the root systems and things like that. And finally, the ordinance has a penalty for violations of the, of the, of the ordinance. It's a, considered an infraction for single-family properties or a misdemeanor for all other properties. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Are there any other, um, announcements, reports? Thought we were going to have someone speak this evening?
We did, uh, did we get a, do we have a speaker on for this one?
We don't, uh, Craig or Commissioner, we don't have, um, we, we had a comment earlier about, uh, wanting to, the city to protect more trees on the ordinance. Um, but, uh, that speaker, um, we, we, we provided the, um the information for the Zoom meeting tonight, but they have, they have not, um, come, come to the meeting.
Terrific. And then the commission received that?
Yes.
All right, and I have just one, uh, actually two, uh, other updates. Um, one, um, just a reminder that the joint session, um, with the City Council, um, on the Focus General Plan update for the housing element, the safety element, and the environmental justice element is scheduled for next Tuesday, um, at six fifteen. That, that time is a little inflexible. We may push it back. The City Council's got a couple other closed items, so it may end up at six thirty, but we'll definitely uh notify you, um, by tomorrow of, of the exact time, but it'll be either six fifteen or six thirty. Um, so we got a, a, a lot of information. There's a lot of work that's been done on the general plan. The planning staff is, is, has really been pushing this. Uh, a lot of information out to the community, and we're trying to provide as much information to the commission as possible too. So, um, I think a lot of questions will be answered, and we'll give you an update of where we are on that process, um, next week. Um, and then additionally, just want to invite, um, anybody who's interested. This Saturday is our MAP Neighborhood Conference. Um, we are doing this virtually. Um, so if you would like to, uh, attend or to register, um, you can check out our, the, the city's website, cityofmonrovia.org slash MAP. And you can, uh, take you to link to register, or shoot any one of us an email, and we can get you registered and get the information. Uh, most of it's going to be pre-recorded, but, uh, we've got some really interesting sessions. Um, the community development staff, um, has one session that's going to talk about kind of what we do, um, all the things that we do in, in the department. So, um, always a good time. Hope, we're hoping in twenty-twenty-two, we can do this, um, in person. But, uh, the, the neighborhood conference is always a highlight of, of all of our years. So, um, certainly want to include the commissioners if they're interested. That is all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay, do any of the commissioners have any questions or any announcements that they'd like to make? Any questions for Craig? I'd like, I have a statement. I just want to say thank you to staff, all of you, for for, uh, the hard work you put into tonight's meeting and Sherry's absence. So thank you, and I appreciate all your help as usual.
Thank you.
Any comments or reports or anything from the fellow commissioners? No? Everyone's silent? I see smiles. Okay, well, with that being said, I think we will call this meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen.
Good night.
Thank you.
Everyone, you all.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Glad Craig was here.